The meeting will come to an end in two weeks.
Motion being ordered to adjourn to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dolly would you call the board?
Degner.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
Wender.
Yes.
We are formed.
Thank you. Motion being ordered to accept the agenda with the one addition which is facing the middle of the August ballot. What's your pleasure, Board?
I move that we accept the agenda with that one addition, number six, A6, as its printer says.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Okay, there's support. Board Bar, discussion, comments, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion carried. We've got the meeting minutes of March 28th. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move to the minutes of the day.
Moved by John. Board Joe, comments?
I'll abstain because I was not present at this meeting.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion carried. We're down to citizen time. Any citizen want to address the board, please come to the floor.
Hi, Mike Bronzak, twenty seconds. Having following getting a little more involved in the concern that I have in talking to other taxpayers and neighbors is when I see how the board is interacting and the commissioner of the Finance Committee meeting wants to discuss and our chairman says, no, discussions are over, I don't agree with that type of things. There's, there's, are things that you guys are trying to decide for us, it requires heavy discussion. And I just want to point that now we're already on that if, if you want me to give you the example of your fish from memory, I will. But that was when John wanted to have conversation with Controller Fuel over the level six, level seven, and you stopped it, that should not happen. You guys need to work for us harder than that. So I'll say right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So enough like to address the board. Paul, could you wait just a little bit? We have you on the agenda.
I understand, but I, I was going to introduce our new staff person here versus that which wasn't on the agenda, but I can wait, I can wait for that, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Why don't you wait and do it all at once?
Okay, alright.
It'll be coming up shortly for it. Any other person want to address the board? Any other person saying no, we'll move on. Motion being ordered to go into closed session, no, move, to recess the regular meeting and enter a public hearing in regards to patrol vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, I will, we're going to recess the meeting, go into a public hearing.
Moved by John, Board Bar, roll call.
Degner.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
Wender.
Aye.
Motion's carried, okay, we've had this hearing in the past and I don't know what happened, do you know Diana? But we have, we have to do it again now.
There were some publication deadlines to meet, they had to be published ten days before the, before the meeting, the public meeting and the public hearing.
Okay.
And that's been done.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the board or the sheriff? CNN, motion being ordered to close public hearing and reconvene regular meeting.
So who?
Move then, as Board, Board John, roll call please.
Kramer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
Wender.
Aye.
Degner.
Yes. Motion's carried. Finance Committee, Ann.
Number one, I move that we accept the trial balance and budget status report from the Treasurer for period ending March 30th, 2016.
Moved by Ann.
Support.
Board Bar, comments, questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion carried.
Number two, I move we approve the request from Green Senior Center for dispersment of their 2016 millage allocation in the amount of $22,500.
Moved by Ann.
Support.
Board Bar, comment, roll call please.
Martin.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
Wender.
Aye.
Degner.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Number three, I move that we approve the request from Michigan State University Extension for .07 mil for five years to be placed on the August 2 ballot.
Moved by Ann. Support. Board John. Paul, now if you'd come forward please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I spoke to you last in February, we talked about we were backfilling the 4H position, the halftime 4H position, but we're adding an additional halftime to SNAP ad position, so we're actually gaining a halftime position here for the county. And this is Jessica Coron.
Yes.
She started April 1st, she does halftime 4H and halftime SNAP education, which is working with low income kids in the schools and things of that nature. So really, really pleased to have her on board, but wanted to get her to sit here today.
Nice to meet you all. Thanks for coming.
How does you spell her last name?
C-O-R-O-N.
Okay.
Paul, would you like to address your request for millage allocation?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to give full acknowledgement and thanks to both Sid and Dolly, they're very, very helpful and beneficial in trying to get this a little bit more squared away this time around, so I really appreciate their help. What we decided to do, based on what we had and a lot of user feedback, and I'm not sure if you saw my email that I sent out there to Sonia and to Dolly and Sid, but we decided we did not really require the same level of admin support, and we wanted to try to really scale back in terms of what our ask for. We were very, very pleased, to be honest, of what we had for electoral turnout last time around, we really only lost by 300 votes, but I also wanted to be very fiscally frugal and transparent as we have been from a, and you saw the budget proposal that I had there. It's a pretty tight budget proposal, to be honest, and it assumes certain things that may or may not happen with the equalized value. So we know that it's more than likely going to go down for 2016 versus what it was in 2015, but we don't know what it looks like beyond that. So that's why you have that budget projection, you have the equalized value in terms of what it was for .07, it's just short of, I think, $69,000. And we have a little bit of flexibility in there, but it's relatively close. If you look at that, I think over the five-year average, I got it as close as I could, and it was about $346, it's $350, so it's really pretty tight. So hopefully we'll see a little bit raise in equalized value, but we're certainly not going to bill the taxpayers or anything like that more than what our costs are, and you see what our costs are under that projection, so.
Any questions, Mr. Paul?
Thank you, I appreciate the board's support.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Thanks.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion carried.
Number four, I move we approve the request from Almost Home Shelter, Animal Shelter for dispersment of their 2016 appropriation in the amount of $5,000.
Moved by Ann, Board Bar, comments, roll call please.
Stephen.
Yes.
Wender.
Aye.
Degner.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Martin.
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Number five, I move we approve the proposal from Anderson, Tacman and Company to perform Dickinson County's annual audit for fiscal years ending December 31st, 2015, 2016 and 2017 at a cost of $26,000 per year and authorize chairman to sign documentation relative to same.
Moved by Ann, support, Board Bar, comments? Mr. Chairman, would this be, would this be out? No. I guess talking to Sonia, that everybody was pleased, our departments and that, and everybody was happy to work with them, lots of did a very good job.
I'm not disputing that, I think they do a marvelous job, but I'm just wondering if there's somebody else that can do the same thing at a cheaper cost.
We have looked at that in the past, John, we've practically discussed this more than once, a few years ago, we had stayed to it one year, I think it cost us a fair number of money, but. I think in the end result is, is we have, I think we have did this out, I don't know the years, but since I came back, work much different, and Anderson, Tacman usually gives us to collect a three-year deal, if they only go for one year, it's more money, but you can come on, if that's true.
I did not remember that.
They've handled the system so well, they're coming into it so efficiently at a fair price, but I think this is one of those times where, you know, we, even though our policy may save, even over certain amount, we bet out, but this is one of those cases, I think, where you just, it worked well with us and the department does.
I think.
But I understand where you're coming from.
I think the nice thing is, if anybody has a question, they can call down there, any time of year, if you have a minute.
Mr. Chairman, isn't this the same amount we've seen in the past? So it's another three years of the same fraction, that's, we won't have to look at any increases for three years.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? Roll call please.
Wender.
Aye.
Stephen.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Degner.
Yes. Motion's carried.
And number six, I move that we approve the placement of Dickinson County operating millage of .75 mils for four years on the August 2nd, 2016 ballot.
Moved by Ann, there's support?
Support.
Board Bar, open for discussion. Well, what's your pleasure, Board?
I, I, I'd say something.
Go ahead.
This is something that I think we've all been beating along the bush for a long time now, and today, I thought I thought about all day long, even while the Tigers were losing, I was thinking about it. We've lost two times in a row. Voters have basically said, no, if we go in August, we're going to have a third millage on it, the two conservation district, Michigan State and ours, so the chances of winning again, who knows? I know we need the millage, but my thoughts from the beginning of this, months and months ago, was to put it on the November ballot because you have a larger voting block of people, especially this November, when this presidential campaign is going to be quite interesting. I think you'll have a huge turnout. I think a lot of people will be looking at that ballot and paying attention to it. So my thoughts are, November, I don't like the four years, I think, I think three years, even though it doesn't work into a cycle, and it appears unfair for the voters, and I think points that we buy is fair. We do need the millage, there's no doubt about it. But I just don't think August is the right time, and I want to go back to my original statement, I thought November is the right time to do it.
Okay, other comments?
The November ballot is going to be full of state proposals besides the presidential election and all of the other seats. So there's going to be a lot for people to read, and there's going to be voter fatigue by plenty by the time November comes around. The people are just going to be starting in a, in a, they're going to get into a cycle or a groove, and they're just going to do whatever they want, but it's not going to be well considered.
And can I respond to that? So we're telling the voters, they're not smart enough to read through the proposals, and they can't think on their own to vote the way they think.
No, I'm saying that there will be voter fatigue by November rolls around. I think that we, if we want to get people to notice what we really need, we need to put it out there for them when they have the opportunity to read, read, not be, I don't know, I better shut up just because, okay, I'm stopping. But I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, the voters are very great people, but there's going to be a lot for them to digest on the, on the November ballot, a lot.
It also gets us.
And we also have, we also have the history that, that people have said no to us twice.
Well, we'll respond to that again, we'll start having.
No, I'd rather listen to you.
It also has to do with PR to November. It's quite obvious that we've got a problem financially, and if we can use that time for the summer and fall to, to campaign our, our concerns, it gives us more time to put that out to the public. And that's another reason I think November would be better. The downside of that is, is you won't get any money until 18, right? What would you get, what would that, that's all I got to say.
Well, after listening to Joe, I'm thinking that we should delay acting on this, we have one more meeting before we have to do it, and it's a hard decision, and I'm wondering if the board might consider thinking about it. I think there's some solid reasons for holding off until November.
Okay, well, I don't want to see taxes go up more than anybody else, but when I look at the cuts we made, the personnel we cut and terminated, unemployed due to a trip, and look at all the cuts we made, it's unreal, and people say, well, we could have done better. Well, I'd like to see anybody examine our budget, those who say we could have done better, examine our budget, tell us where we could have cut. I think we cut everything to the bare bones, and I am prepared to have it put on the ballot, whether it be August or November. John?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we just had a meeting to discuss this, and we made a motion, bring it to the floor, so why are we discussing it more? I mean, we made a motion, bring it to the floor, to vote on it, let's vote on it, one way or the other, yes or no?
Okay, John, are you saying you're ready to vote?
Yes, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, what was the motion again, Paul?
The motion was to put .75 mils for four years on the August 2nd ballot.
Okay, and that was supported.
Yes.
And support, Joe?
I want to argue with John that he's just said, we put it down.
I'm not arguing with you, Joe.
Alright, well, I mean, I mean, it's not just a statement. We had a meeting before this meeting to decide, to bring it up to this. This is a public body, we have every right to discuss anything at any time. And I, for some to say that, why should we not discuss it, I, I don't give that saving at all.
Okay, roll call please.
Degner.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Stephen.
No.
Wender.
Aye.
So motion's carried. We'll move on, 895, Bar.
No report.
Crystal Lake, Bar.
Um, no report tonight.
Six County, Joe.
Now, there is no report other than the full board, that's going to be, you know, the six county, um, alliance is going to be a full UP now, and that is going forward. I expect to have our first meeting on that probably in the next couple of months, so it's more updated if that happens.
Could Keith please explain what that is, Joe, would you explain a little bit more?
Well, the governor has wanted to legalize new agencies, and he wanted the UPs to be all one agent for, I don't know, alliance, but what we did in our six counties, we bought that, and we ended up with three of them in the UP, but there's maybe one board that's going to oversee the whole UP. And me and I are on that board, and as the process goes forward, we haven't met yet, but we will be doing that.
Okay. Okay, anything further, Joe?
No.
Blackning and Stoning, Bar.
Uh, nothing tonight.
How about the HHS Community Service?
Um, we have the Department of Health and Public Safety, we have the Department of Health and Public Safety on March 28th.
The I Health, Joe?
Um, no report.
Okay, North Point, Ann?
The meeting minutes of March 10th are in the packet, and there are currently two vacancies of Dickinson County positions on the board, so we're looking for two people to fill those vacancies. One of the vacancies was crossed by a person who did not reapply for appointment, and the other is by the resignation of Peg Freeman from the board, so I think later in the agenda tonight, we're going to advertise for applicants for this board.
Okay, fine question, John?
I have no report tonight.
How about the equalization?
Yeah, no report tonight. Sid, you got anything?
Nothing, Greg.
Thanks, thanks for coming, said building, comply, real estate, remodel. John?
I have no report tonight.
Public safety. My committee, and on our agenda, this is recognized, the county friend of the court, costing factor in this rating, they were ranked number one in the UP, number 11 in the state, and all of the staff received individual recognition for outstanding performances in specialty areas. What's your pleasure, Board?
I would move that we recognize, um, the court.
Moved by Joe.
Report?
Board Bar, comments?
Mr. Chairman, can we add a form of resolution to recognize him?
And lawyers, Joe?
I would move that we do a resolution, recognizing their yearly effectiveness.
Okay, you got the motion now, but, okay, open for discussion. Heidi, would you like to address the board?
I promise I won't take too long. I just wanted to say, in 2015, my office collected and dispersed over $3.88 million in support. Additionally, we collected revenues in the amount of $287,559. This amount not only represents the reimbursements and fees, but also the incentives for productivity in current and arid support collections, case establishment, medical enforcement and paternity establishment. My expenses for 2015 were in the total amount of $356,292. Therefore, Dickinson County received back approximately 80.72% of what I spent. This included wages and benefits for three full-time and one part-time staff member. The office ran at an expense to the county of $5,727 per month. Already this year, our fee collection is up 16% in the first quarter from the same time period last year. My philosophy is to always do more than what is expected of you to do, as well as maintain integrity and fairness. I believe that my staff and I accomplish these things daily. I believe that it is also important to know that the financials are only one part of what my office addresses. I also want to assure you that the same effort and care that goes into my fiscally responsible budget and management is the same effort and care that goes into the other areas of operation, which are equally important. Even with the financial successes we have achieved this past year, you can be assured that my office will continue to strive to do even better. Appreciate your time this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, anything?
I'd like to say something. Every year, it's a story every year, every year you come up and you tell us what you've done, and I think every year, we appreciate it. You are number one in UP and high in the state, and you can't ask for much better than that, so, thank you. From all of us here, we really appreciate what you do, and thank you.
Thank you.
And your old staff.
Can I have your, what you read? Yes, thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion carried. Parks Committee, Joe?
That was Eric this morning for a little bit, he's got about 70% of the lease rate, but of course the snow came, so he'll finish it up when the snow goes, and this weekend is going to be Iron Mountain. They're kind of getting in line to pull the dumps from the road limits off, so he's, he's busy starting to get the park ready for tomorrow later.
Now, the bids for the concessions stand, where do, Wendy, you know Diana?
Uh, I'm a petite.
And he is getting a bid also from the Road Commission for Ann and for moving the lease to a different space.
Good, anything further? Okay, Airport Committee, no report. Fair Board, John?
Just like to inform the board that we hired a new secretary, his name is Melissa Spade, very enthusiastic, very much involved with the chair, loves the chair, used to be one of the caretaker's daughters that worked with the chair, so she's very much involved, so I think we're kind of excited to have somebody with that much enthusiasm be part of it.
That she has the qualifications?
Yes, she has, she has numerous associate degrees, she has all her, she run her own business, and she ran bookkeeping with Quikens, and she knows the Blue River Program, and she has a, a degree in social media, or Facebook, so.
Okay, Library, Ann?
Uh, there's a meeting tomorrow night, we love the meeting.
Employee relations, John?
I have no report tonight, sir.
Hospital Committee, Joe?
Uh, not tonight.
Road Commission, no report. Instruction Code, John?
I have no report tonight.
Bay West, John?
We have the Bay West Advisory Committee meeting minutes of January 14th for information.
Now, we're back to citizen time, any citizen want to address the board, please come forward.
Chair, I'm John, writing township, excuse me. The Union President's submitted a letter, dated March 30th.
I can't hear you.
The Union Presidents, they, sent the letter to the board dated March 30th regarding the Employee Relations Committee in, in the meeting. I, I see that it hasn't been addressed yet, I, I just, I'd like to, if, if that is your, your decision is not to meet with us, then at least tell us that, I mean.
I'll address that back to you, we're waiting for some information.
Okay.
To see if we can do that with you, okay?
Okay.
As soon as we get that, we'll get back with you with an answer, we're wondering you.
I know there's been other correspondence, correspondences with, among the union that wasn't addressed by the board, so we just wanted to reiterate that, would you like to at least hear something?
I'm, I'm following up on that, I've given Sonia the direction we've got to do, and we're waiting for some, some answers back.
Okay, thank you.
If we get that, we'll get back.
Dale Olson, greeting, I just want to be aware of the daily news that, speaking as a citizen, okay, citizen of Dickinson County, I guess the first thing is, I just want to congratulate Heidi for getting 80.5% of her, her money back, which is good, as a taxpayer, appreciate that. The other thing is, is bidding out on, you should be bidding out your, I'll go back here, your tax stuff for your annual audits. I know Iron Mountain, what we did was, we had Anderson, Tacman, we were here, $28,000 a year, we had, we went out for bids on it, and we ended up with one year, $12,000, actually we had a three-year deal for $12,000 from another company. Anderson lost it twice in a row, the third time they came back at $15,000. So it's well worth bidding it out, could have saved maybe some money on there. The other thing is, is that I'm really surprised you're going after this millage again, I know I said it at one of your finance meetings, I think we need better management, less taxes. You know, you threatened all the taxpayers the first time you did it, that you're going to cut everything, well, you did. So if you cut everything, you shouldn't need the money now. I think we can do, you can do, you don't need to be cutting people, you can do it by attrition, I think you can consolidate some of your jobs that you have in this courthouse. So I think that, you know, I mean, you went through and you cut all the parks out, we have one park left, you're not paying for that, YMCA, 4H you cut out, veterans, you reduced them down, and some other ones. So I think you, hopefully the taxpayers, so, tell you no for the third time, I think we need better, better management.
Uh, Mike Miller, Iron Mountain, Dickinson County. Just a few things real quick, uh, as, as the veterans representative, uh, real quick, uh, the MOA that you gave us required us to give you a quarterly report. I hope you guys have all had a chance to see it. Um, I re, I gave that to Sonia on the first of March. Uh, you can see that we're still providing all of the service that we normally do, just on a reduced amount of time. Uh, and, and in that vein, I still want to let you know that according to, uh, the Veterans Administration out of Washington, D.C., uh, Michigan ranks about 52nd in providing services to their veterans. If the Upper Peninsula were a state by itself, it would be the second-best state, uh, in the, in the country in providing services to, to their veterans. And Dickinson County still is the number-one county in the, in the county in providing those services. Uh, as you probably read in the newspaper, uh, speaking of doing those services, uh, I couldn't, I, I can't do the Memorial Day thing. Uh, it wasn't more than, yeah.
You just said, before you gave us a big long speech before, you can't. You said you can't is not a word for you.
It is not a can't, okay. Um, my board, thank you very much. My board voted for me not to coordinate the, um, the Memorial Day services. So under that rule that they passed, I am saying I can't do it. They're telling me, Mike, you may not, you may not spend office time coordinating Memorial Day function. Did, is that, did that explain that, John? Okay. And, and it wasn't more than, I don't know, before the ink was dry on the newspaper, that I had four veterans organizations call me and say, we would like to move forward if we could do that. I believe, uh, Commissioner Stevens has already been approached by it. I think, uh, Commissioner Wender's already been approached by one of those organizations. Um, I can tell you that that organization has already gone to the BANS, close if we can move forward with that. Uh, that's an important part of this county and a core part of veterans, and I, I appreciate that that, that organization stepped forward. Uh, on the side, I see that there's a millage request for Michigan State University Extension for a millage. Um, I would like you all to consider a millage for the Veterans Association. I will tell you that, um, the millage that was recently passed, I'm not a Facebook fan. My wife is, uh, but her coordination on Facebook, there were not, I don't go one way or the other, but there were a lot of veterans that just said, no. They've got a, uh, something stuck in their craw about, about you all reducing the budget of, of our office and feel that, and I think there was a, a letter, a meta, letter to the editor that said, you know, if you would just get the veterans on board, we can help you pass this millage. Um, doing something along that line, I think would go a long way to show the 2,500 veterans that reside in Dickinson County, the one out of 10 residents that are members, families of, of veterans, that, I don't think you guys are anti-veteran. I, I, I will tell that to everybody. I don't think, I, I don't think they're... But I think having a better relationship with the veterans in terms of conversations, I think would go a long way to reassuring the veterans that you all are looking out for their best interest, that you do understand the importance of this, of the office, and that things can move forward. Um, I, I don't get involved on that side. I don't get involved in Facebook. I don't get involved in voting. They come to me and say, Mike, well, how should I vote? I go, I go back, read the paper, make up your own decision. But they do come to me. They do ask for my leadership. They do ask for my recommendations. And I just think there's, there's a missing piece, what, 3,000 votes or 300 votes, whatever it was last time, that I think those veterans, if they would have some assurance that the office would continue forward for a permanent and long-term fix to the problem, I think, I think you'd have a lot easier chance, no matter when you plan on doing it, in August or, or November. But again, thank you very much. Um, I look at my report, you'll see that report in the newspaper every quarter also.
Okay. Anyone else like to address the board? Please come forward. Anyone else saying no? And we're moving on. Both agenda items in addition to policy. Part.
Um, last, I asked if we would consider, um, a policy that would allow us to limit the last-minute additions to the agenda unless in an emergency or voted on at committee by consensus at committee of a whole, or in a special meeting, or by declaration of, of, of an emergency by the chair. Since then, I found out a couple of things, um, that there is actually something on the books that, um, is similar to that, and I'm going to defer to John because he has more knowledge about that.
It was back when Frank Smith was back on the board, yet, uh, we had quite a numerous amount of additions, and he then passed a motion to, uh, not allow that to happen, uh, that we would have time to be able to analyze the additions before they get submitted. I believe, if I remember correctly, I supported that motion, and it did pass. That was many, many years ago, so I don't know if it's there, or if it got lost, by the way, sorry, but it was, was acted on once before.
So I, to follow that, you know, I, I don't like stuff last minute, and for myself, if it comes last minute and I haven't had a chance to review it, it's most likely, unless it's a declared emergency or something that I can see the actual writing on the wall, I'm going to, I'm going to say that I would be very reluctant to vote on, on an issue unless I have time to review it. And so if there is indeed a policy out there already, I think we should follow the policy. In that case, we don't need to vote on this unless we need to reiterate what, what was done in the past.
We have, we also have that option to table it if we feel that it was added at the very last minute. We can always table it for the next meeting.
I'm not for it. The chair and any board member, I think, has a right to get stuff put on the agenda. And, um, in the past, I used to go over the agenda every Friday before the Monday meeting, and I've been lax there. But Thursday, I was in the visit with Sonia and over the agenda, and then see where we needed additions or corrections. Now, tonight, we had the special meeting, so we did have additions. But other than that, I will watchdog it and keep that in your own minds when you want something on the agenda at the last minute. So I don't see no, any need for action.
With this, uh, policy already, let's dig it up and see what it says.
Okay. Okay, any further comments on this? Move on. Joe. 9B.
9B. Uh, move to approve to authorize the controller to send a letter to North Care Network detailing expectations with regard to substance abuse program in Dickinson County.
I'll support that. You moved, and John supported, okay, open for discussion. And now, we went through this the last meeting. We had an opinion from Lisa. We should pay it. And I'm inclined to think we should pay it if we got a legal opinion from our county prosecutor. We're open for discussion, board.
We actually had two legal opinions, and the second one as well said that this PA-2 funds are properly under the control of, uh, from Paul Toker and Toski, that those funds should be paid to North Care Network, and, uh, I think they have spoken and given us their opinion, and, and we should pay the, the monies.
Okay, Joe.
Well, we agreed last time to send a letter, um, even though it was too, too, too low of a scale. Um, and I, I assumed if we sent a letter, we'd want to wait to get a response before we voted again. So I, I think we're going to send a letter, see what the response is. It's a good letter. I'm glad John did this. It's well, well, well-written, and then see how they come back to us, and then we're going to make a decision on whether they do.
Okay. I, I would just like to add, if, if they would, if they would start doing what we're supposed to be able to have done, I, I have never, ever, ever thought that this money was not supposed to go to them. This money was supposed to go to them, and it is going to go to them, but they need to respond to our policy and our, our, uh, recommended plan, and they need to present that to the advisory board so that it can be approved. They refuse to do that. They, they're operating off of an old system that they used to use in their old, uh, coordinated agency, and we have the law of when this was all put in, and that was a, uh, a crude accounting system. And that crude accounting system is an active system that you use yearly up-to-date. They did not do any services for one year because they collected all the money from each county and held it for one year. So no services got paid for. The services that got paid for were paid for by, uh, Western U.P., and Mark Hokel now gave $14,000 to pay the bills of his own money so that they could be paid for the services that are out there. Now it's time that I feel that we as a county write them a letter, get an answer back from them, and then respond to it after that. And if they give us the budget and then approve the plan that we submitted, then it's time to release the money and let it go.
Okay. Any further discussion? Go call, please.
Degner?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wender?
Name, motion carried. Question. Go ahead, Joe.
This is, if this had been voted down, and you were to sign, you're supposed to send the letter as chairman, that means the letter would not go out, right? Because you wouldn't sign it.
No, I would sign it.
Well, the chair, you voted no not to send the letter.
Yeah.
So we're still signing.
Yeah, it's a democratic system.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
No, I'll sign it. I'll sign it twice if you want.
Not once.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
That's it. No petitions in the business. Uh, move to approve the request of the court to advertise for upcoming committee appointments to North Point, Behavioral Health Systems Board, Hume Lake Commission, and any other committee agencies.
Okay, moved by John?
I'll support.
Part Ann. And this is just to, uh, conservation and a plan for grants. Any comments from the board also? Okay. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time, motion carried. Motion being in order to accept committee report. One more, Mr. Chairman. 9B. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. Go ahead.
Uh, move to approve the request from D R I S C, Wild Rivers Invasion Species Coalition, to join him as a partner and authorize chairman to execute memorandum of understanding relative to the same, and this is at no cost to the county.
We just done that. No? Okay. Is there support?
Yes.
Part. Okay, any comments? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time, motion carried. Thank you, Joe. A motion being in order to accept committee report to correspondence and place one trial.
So move.
Moved by?
Support.
Part Ann. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time, motion carried. Controller is out of town. The doctor's appointment, Commissioner's, here with John.
Um, I was reading a paper Saturday morning there, and I seen that article in there, and I'm, I'm sorry Mike left because I, I, I think he needed to be here to hear me, so. Um, I hold the utmost respect for any veteran that served our nation in, in battle of war. I, I honor the people to the utmost. Now I'm getting the veterans bashing the commissioners because we had to make cuts in our budget. It was nothing that I wanted to do, it was nothing that I, I felt that was the right thing to do. I would give them all the money in the world if we had it. But he comes in and he gives us a big long speech that can't is not a word in his dictionary, and then he used it tonight, can't. He corrected me twice on the floor at that meeting that I used the word can't. If, if they can't do it, and they bash the commissioners for a volunteer time, then why aren't they volunteering that? To put on that, and I understand now they're going to ask the agency to do it, and I commend them immensely for that. But, you know, we got a big shoulder, we can take it, we can bash us all you want. We tried our best to help them out as best we could. Um, I think it's, it's time that if, if they're going to, uh, preach out that we're so bad, then they got to cover their own backyards to make sure that they're telling the truth also. Okay, Barb?
Um, nothing to make.
Okay, Joe?
Well, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm attending the meetings of the veterans' office and figures now, and I, I'm going to listen more than anything. My whole point of going to those meetings is communication. And I think communication between all agencies in the, in the county is good, but I think that one, uh, we need to have all gears open. Memorial Day will happen. Um, the committee that put on the wall last summer, I believe, will handle this. Um, we've been talking to Danny Olson and all the committee members that were on that meeting. We, we haven't met yet, but we have started some stuff. So to not have a Memorial Day service in our county courthouse is a dishonor to those who died for us, and we'll let them. Um, that's it.
Ann?
Joe, I'm real glad you're attending those meetings because I think all of this stuff boils down to communication, and I, I'm glad you're there and that you can, by your presence, lend our support to the veterans. And I want to compliment the veteran office for the report they gave us on their monthly activity. It was detailed, it was right to the point, it was exactly what we had requested as far as the traffic in the office, the services they provide. Very impressive report. Uh, number two, when I get to this last item in our meeting tonight, Wild Rivers Invasive Species Coalition, this is just one more thing that we have had to limit and cut out of our budget, and that is any support for fighting invasive species, which, which is a terrible thing, and these are our natural resources, and, you know, we used to pay in help groups to, to fight the invasive species, and that is no longer done. So there are many reasons to support, uh, you know, the millage request, and if people want to punish us and say, well, we've, we've had all the cuts, now they can live. Well, you know, you can't do much without more, and, uh, more support for the veterans, support her for fighting invasive species. I have one constituent who says, I love the rivers, I love the streams, I love Lake Antwine. If you put a millage on the, on the ballot to fight invasive species, you would get my support, and, you know, we're not even doing that anymore. So these are times of transition. Uh, so that's all I have to say.
I wish Mike Miller was here. Last night, I went to bed and I was thinking about the article in the paper last week, and I was upset. I was woke to four o'clock this morning. I had a good speech ready for Mike Miller, and I don't like the way they targeted the county board. He and Ray Ham criticized the four of us that didn't attend the function, but Joe talked and did a very good job. Now they're going to come to us again looking for a millage. Is that the way to treat the people that are asking for money? Mike, you come back again? I'd like to go further with it. You know, it makes it sound as though we don't value the veterans. I had four brothers in the service. One had malaria, one had shrapnel. I had nephews in the service. One got killed on Hamburger Hill. I had a grandson in the service, and I don't like service people. Mike Miller, you and I got to talk because I'm tired of your line of bull. With that, I think I said enough, and I hope Mike gets the message. Motion to adjourn. Sheriff, I will. Support by Joe, report dark, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to adjourn. Chair, I will. The board by Joe. The board, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.